Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 1st, 2014. It's 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the Wrigley Schedule Meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Before the Pledge of Allegiance, let me just announce, the score is 2 to 1 unfortunately, with Belgium in the lead. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the June 17th council meeting and the June 24th council workshops. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second?
Moved to second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing July 1st, 2014 as Senator Thrasher and Representative Hudson Appreciation Day in Palm Coast. Mr. Landon, would you like to introduce this?
Sure, I would love to introduce this. Our two state representatives here really helped us a great deal this year. We had a couple of projects, a couple of high, high priorities city council, and one of them actually happened more last summer, but the Oak Kings Road Extension and advancing that funding so that it happened at the same time the Matanzas Wood Interchange occurred so that we'd have local traffic get to that interchange without going by the high school. So that's good for all of us. And of course, during session, the state was funding some water projects, water improvement projects, finally. Shows that times have improved and we were able to get one of our water projects that will deal with some of the color and iron in our water system so we can meet the Clean Water Act. Both Mr. Hudson's and Thrasher were very helpful in making that happen. And then, you know, during the year, we also had good luck with things like the rental home, vacation rental homes that they helped with, the TPO, a lot of that was going on behind the scenes and working through the TPO. So, you know, it was a good year for us at the state. We complain about Tallahassee on a regular basis. It's actually kind of nice to say thank you and we appreciate it once in a while, so...
Councilmember?
Good. I got the honor this evening.
Thank you very much.
Proclamation. Whereas Florida Senator John Thrasher and Florida Representative Travis Hudson represent legislative districts that include the city of Palm Coast, and whereas during the 2014 Florida legislative session, Florida Senator Thrasher and Florida Representative Hudson were instrumental in securing funding for the Palm Coast Water Treatment Plant Number Three Concentrate Treatment Project for iron and color reduction. And whereas this project will recover and treat 750,000 gallons on an average annual day, water that previously would have been discarded and will result in, and would have resulted in few, and will result in fewer required wells in the future, reducing the burden on the water supply and on Palm Coast utility rate payers. And whereas this project will allow Water Treatment Plant Number Three to operate at 100-plus percent recovery, 100-plus is pretty encouraging, making it environmentally friendly and one of the most efficient nanofiltration plants in the world. And whereas Senator Thrasher and Representative Hudson assisted with other legislative priorities during the 2014 Florida legislative session on behalf of the citizens of Palm Coast and the state of Florida. And whereas these legislative priorities including acceleration of transportation priorities in the Palm Coast Northeast Corridor and increasing local control over vacation rental regulations. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby designate July 1, 2014 as Senator Thrasher and Representative Hudson Appreciation Day in Palm Coast. Sign this first day of July, 2014. City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Thank you very much. [applause]
Maybe mayor and all council if...
All council members?
It'd be good.
Two, one, final.
We've been...
All right.
We've been...
We're gonna do a few.
All right, one, two, three. We'll do a couple, so keep smiling. One, two, three. One more. She's done. All right, one, two, three. Please, the hairpiece would like to...
Thank you guys. No, this is actually... Did I turn it off? Is it on now?
You're good.
Thank you guys, this is a big honor. I really appreciate this, you know, I believe it was mentioned by Mr. Ferguson that Senator Thrasher and I were instrumental, as he read it, getting this done. I think the senator was the instrument and I was the "all" part. But no, this is a big thing. I'm happy as, you know, my first year up there and with the senator's great help to be able to do something for our district and bring something back home. And this is a, this is a big award and I appreciate this and it's gonna be hung in the office and just thank you for all you guys doing. I'm looking forward to serving for two more years and helping out in any way I can, so thank you. [applause]
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and members. I know this Travis, we both appreciate it. It's like you said, Mayor, it's nice to receive something of nice every now and then. I used to be on the school board years and years ago when I first elected job and I used to complain and moan about what Tallahassee was doing to us at that time and I understand. There are a lot of things go on there that particularly we don't like, but sometimes that happens. But it's good to do this. Travis and I both have enjoyed representing Flagler County. I know five years ago when I was elected, I was kind of a new person here and I hope I've gotten to know as many of you as I can and we look forward to working for you and doing other things for you as the next session comes about. The economy is improving, that's a good news and so if there are some additional things out there that we can help with as this session starts to approach, I hope you'll let us know. But we dearly appreciate this, it's an honor to be here. Thank you all for this great recognition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator. You know, council, we know how busy we are taking care of the business of one little city. The representative and the senator have a whole district to care for and tremendous amount of time and effort has to go into their job and yet every time we've gone to Tallahassee, every time we've made a phone call, they've made time for us and they've listened and in most cases, they've been extraordinarily supportive. So thank you on behalf of the city of Palm Coast.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Mr. Landon?
It's fun time again, summertime and this is an annual event and Luann and her staff, I think, really look forward to this. They're gonna do a little presentation and a little video that, are we gonna do the proclamation first? Mr. McGuire, please.
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Palm Coast, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month and encourage residents and visitors to enjoy using the parks, trails, programs, and special places that enhance the quality of life in our community. Sign this first day of July, 2014. City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
And now to speak for Parks and Recreation, our very own Luciano Pavarotti? No.
Thank you all, Mayor, City Council. I first want to thank you for recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month here in Palm Coast and across our country. As I have said in the past, the support from all of you sitting at the dais this evening and our coworkers in all departments and divisions has been the best experience that I've had in my 20-year career and I couldn't be more thankful for the support that we get across the board, regardless of who we call or who we talk to within the city. They are always there, willing and able to help us, so thank you to everybody. I want to introduce our Parks and Recreation staff and we have some new members with us tonight. Well, first we'll start with Lauren Bennett, who is our Recreation Supervisor for General Recreation and she's the one that puts together all our camps and programs for adults, seniors, kids, everybody, you name it, she does it. James Hurst is our new Aquatic Supervisor. You will see him at Frida Zamba Swimming Pool and doing our programs, lifeguard training, swim lessons, diving movies, you name it, at the pool, he'll be there and a part of it. Sandy Miller is one of our Leisure Service Advisory Committee members and is here with us tonight and always supportive and there and volunteering whenever we need her. And Roxy Gonzalez, our newest member, or one of our newest members, our Recreation Superintendent, who helps me get everything done that we do here in our department, so your Recreation Staff, so thank you. I continually get asked, what do you do in Parks and Recreation? And my mom asks me all the time and I try to explain to her what I do and it's really hard, so I tell her, you know, go to the Y and that's kind of what we do, and go over here and that's kind of what we do. And I never have a really good concise explanation to share with anybody who asks me that question. And as we were getting ready for tonight, it's been over a year, and I went to our Communications and Marketing Division and said, okay, here's my thought, I want to really show what it would be like a day in the life of Parks and Recreation to try to encapsulate all that we do in about two minutes. And what they produced and what they came up with is better than what I could have envisioned. And so without any further ado, a walk through life.
Hey, you know what? Palm Coast Parks and Recreation sure has a lot of things going on all the time.
They sure do. They really have something for everyone. Even my family, friends, and neighbors participate.
Wouldn't it be great if Parks and Rec had a video showing all they do?
That's what I said.
You know what? I think they do.
Walk through life. Every day is a new beginning. Shine your light. It's your day and the world is waiting. Move along to the song singing in your soul. Feel the beat, clap your hands, let it take control. All you need, all you want, are you ready to find your way? 'Cause every day is a new day. And everything's going your way. You wanna make it last forever. Keep it together, 'cause it keeps getting better. Whoa, whoa. Walk through life and move ahead to your destination. Shine so bright. Be the light of a new creation. If the world is a stage, better start the show. Seven, eight, nine, ten, ready, set, let's go. Turn it on, turn it up, are you ready to find your way? 'Cause every day is a new day. And everything's going your way. You wanna make it last forever. And every day is a new day. And everything's going your way. And you wanna make it last forever. Just keep it together, 'cause it keeps getting better.
The first time I saw it, I actually cried. But I really want to thank our communications and marketing team, Cindy, Jason, and Tom, who put that together. Only one word can explain it and that's awesome, so thank you guys, it was great. Thank you. And what this video did for me is, you know, we get so caught up in the planning of all these events and activities that we really don't get the time to see people enjoying the event. And this video really helped all of us really see the smiles on the faces and how much people here appreciate what we provide for them. And so it was, it was good for us to see that and good to know that we're on the right track and that we're doing good here in our community. And again, it's thanks to your support and the support of everybody here in the city, all the departments, all the divisions. I was writing out the list today of who helps us when we do events and I don't think there's one division in this city or department that hasn't been a part of some event that we've done, including utility. So, you know, they, they keep things flowing, good and bad, so, and we're very appreciative of that. So, everybody's involved in what we do and I can't thank you all enough and thank you again for the recognition. Oh, and one last thing. Lauren, in front of you tonight, there is some information and materials. Our new Palm Coast Facility Guide, again, produced by our Communications and Marketing Division, we're handing those out and they're available and really show and highlight the parks here in our community and a great companion piece to our Trek It Out map. We also have a couple flyers with some of our upcoming events. The fireworks event this July 3rd, our food truck event, and then Lauren's gonna go through the list of all the activities that we have coming up for our Celebrate Parks and Rec Month.
Good evening. I hope you're as excited as I am about the stuff that we have upcoming for Parks and Rec Month. We've really tried to incorporate every age group this month. Kickstarting it off is tomorrow with our Itsy Bitsy Pool Parties for toddlers. Then Thursday is fireworks in the park at Central Park. The launch site has changed back to the original site it was, so if you caught the fireworks last year, it's in the same spot as it was last year. And then we have our Independence Day Celebration Ceremony at Heroes Park. Then back to the pool for Red, White, and Blue Day. We really try and pack the pool in and let people know that we do have a great facility. We're offering a Wellness with Christie Stability Ball Class. She's an excellent instructor, she's here year-round, and this particular class is free, so you can come and see what she's all about. One of my favorites is our Ice Cream Social at Ralph Carter Park and that's sponsored by Brewster's. July 11th is Movies in Central Park and the movie is The Nut Job. Another one back at the pool is our Splash and Dash and the kids will swim really fast in the pool and then run around the Belt Air Park to compete against their friends and just really celebrate active and healthy lifestyle. And then July 12th also, we have our Palm Coast Tennis Center Community Day, which is free. Then back to the pool for Pool Game Day. Then Food Truck Tuesday, which is on the front side of the flyer. We are theming it this month. It's Hawaiian and tropical and beachy. The trucks are gonna offer different specials that flow with that theme, so come out and wear your grass skirt and do some hula dancing with our DJ. Another one we have that week is July 18th is Parents Night Out, so if you've got your little youngsters and you've been dying to take your wife out or, you know, get rid of the kids in the house because they're going crazy, come, you know, drop them off at the community center. It is pre-registration required. We'll have pizza and movies and play games. Then we have a Teen Water Night, which is new this year, so the teens can experience the pool, have some cool chill time. And then July 19th is Saturday is our Tour to Palm Coast. We will start at Linear Park and we will ride six miles, make a stop for the Flight of Life dedication at Waterfront Park. That was beautiful last year, so if you missed it, definitely come out and do the ride with us. We will have refreshments available for those who ride in the ride. Then July 19th is Community Day at Palm Harbor Golf Course and Nine Hold Special is $20. July 20th, we're going back to the pool for our Summer Splash. There'll be a DJ there, hopefully a food vendor. And then to conclude, celebrating Parks and Rec Month is our Dive In Movie and the movie is The Pirates...
Planes.
No, Planes? No.
Pirates is a creature.
Oh. Planes, Planes, come out and see Planes. We are pre-selling tickets for the Dive In Movie. We actually had the longest line I have ever seen this past Friday. We allowed 400 people into the facility and we had to turn people away. So this time, we're going to pre-sell tickets, so if you know anybody that wants to come, tickets will go on sale July 11th. So I hope that you will come out and celebrate Parks and Rec Month. Definitely come out to the Ice Cream Social because it's one of my favorites. Thank you.
And all that information, we have it back on the table and there's flyers out front for all the dates and details for all those events. And thank you all again.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, you know, it just makes me very proud of the advancements that we've seen in our Parks and Recreation, all those activities, et cetera, and that Luann and her staff has had a great deal to do with that. And then of course, our video, I see another word's probably coming, but the fact that we do this all in-house, most people couldn't imagine the fact that, you know, our city staff puts this together and it's that cooperative effort between the different departments and divisions. And then the guide that they put together is just phenomenal, so it makes me very proud. It's really quality work and quality programs out there that Parks and Rec puts together, so I had to pat them on the back.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Property Tax and Millage Rate History, part of our ongoing budget preparation process.
Mayor, City Council, exactly that. We go through the different steps to try to help educate and keep people informed about our budget process and expenditures. This one, I think, is particularly important because so much of focus is on only about 11% of our revenue, which is property tax, but it's lots of times misunderstood, so hopefully people find this very informative. So Chris, take it from here.
Chris, when are you gonna get a video with jazzy music?
Well, you know, Beau asked me in the back if I get up and dance or sing or anything during this presentation and I'm afraid I don't have anything like that.
If you did, you could run for mayor of Toronto.
Right. I think I, I think I look like him a little bit, but...
He's gonna lighten up that hair a little bit, you're close.
Yeah, I think so, but, yeah, I mean, nothing like bringing down a room after something like that. So our property tax presentation, this is another in a series of all of our budget reports and presentations that are presented to city council as part of our, almost at this point, year-long budget process. We're currently in June. Our last presentation was on revenue sources and this one is the property tax presentation. We'll follow up in July with actually going through individual budgets, finalizing those in August, and then the public hearings for the budget are in September. So some property tax terminology, a lot of it is confusing to folks. Truth and millage or TRIM essentially is a shorthand for the rules and regulations promulgated by the state that we have to follow to levy property taxes. Just value, you'll see that if you looked at a property appraiser website, and that's basically an approximation of the market value as determined by the property appraiser of any kind of property. Then you have assessed value, exempt value, and taxable value, and we'll look at those a little closer here. So what actually determines property taxes? Well, the first step is the property appraiser assesses the value of your homes, taking into account certain things like our Save Our Homes limitation, the portability Save Our Homes, you have the 10% limit on non-homesteaded property. These items are subtracted from the just value of your home to come to the assessed value of your home or vacant property. The taxable value then takes this assessed value and subtracts various exemptions that you may be entitled to. Some of those more popular ones are the homestead exemption, there's also senior widow-widower exemptions, military exemptions, a number that folks may qualify for. Subtracting that from the assessed value gets you your actual taxable value. The taxable value, really the numbers that city council has to work with in terms of determining the amount of property taxes that are needed to run a city, a county, or any other taxing entity. The taxable value times the millage rate actually equals the property taxes collected. Each taxing authority sets their own millage rates. We have a number of them in Flagler County, which we'll take a look at in a moment. The Save Our Homes limitations, we kind of keep track of this and this graph really isn't a surprise with the market value of homes plummeting the last several years, the amount of Save Our Homes limitations has decreased significantly. It's kind of starting to level off now and we're looking forward to seeing what the next year numbers are. So your property tax bill, this is, this is a property tax bill that a resident in Palm Coast with a home would receive. You'll see all the different taxing authorities on the bill, Flagler County, the school board, St. John's River Water Management District, the Florida Inland Navigation District, Mosquito Control District, and the very last line is the city of Palm Coast. Each one of those districts and governments set their own millage rates. The only one that we actually have control of is the very bottom one, the city of Palm Coast portion. That's the portion that the city receives property tax revenue for and that's the only portion of your tax bill city council has any control over and it represents just over 20% of the tax bill. Here in Palm Coast, it's been fairly consistent, but about 82 to 83% of all property taxes are paid by residential property. This hypothetical example really is used to show the effect on homesteaded properties of the homestead limitations. Basically, in the first year, to kind of keep it simple, the market value and the taxable value of the property is the same. Over time, in this example, we've assumed that the market value of the property increases by 50% every year. Those are the blue bars. But based on the current property tax system we're working under, the taxable value is capped at 3% per year or the CPI, whichever is lower. So over time, as the market value of a home skyrockets, the taxable value of a home barely increases. That's one of the kind of misconceptions, I think, when a lot of folks talk about property taxes, well, the values are going up, the values are going up. Well, the values may go up, but the actual amount that we're allowed to levy taxes on doesn't increase that much year over year for existing homes. This is the city's millage rate history. 2008, which is right in the middle, was our peak year. Property values just getting over $7 billion. We brought in about $20 million in property tax receipts in 2008. In 2014, our property values were just under $3.7 billion, which is almost half of what it was in 2008. And during that time, between 2008 and 2014, we've actually decreased the amount of property taxes collected by $5 million.
Chris?
Yes.
Quick question. Now, you show the peak of $7 billion?
Yes.
Is that billion? Do you have a figure for what the total county was at that peak, or roughly?
I don't...
Or what percent?
I do.
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 What percent? Or what percent?
I do, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
What percent of Palm Coast is of the county roughly, property value?
I would be guessing, you know, we could talk on average, but I would be guessing back in 2008 what those numbers were at this point.
I can help a little bit. It's between 60% and 65% right now. So it probably was about the same at that point, too.
Okay, thank you.
The county is 65% or the city is?
City is 60% to 65%.
This graph actually talks about the millage rate. The bars in green are representative of the rollback rate, which is the rate that could be charged each year to bring in the exact same amount of taxes as you did the previous year. The bars in black are actually what the City Council levied as a tax rate, as a millage rate. And each year from 2008 to 2014, we have either been at or below the actual rollback rate. And again, this is just a graphical display of the actual tax collections. Again, in 2008, we were just over $20 million, and for the past four years, we've been right around $15 million.
25% decrease.
25% decrease.
Last few years.
This survey we do each year to kind of see where we fit in this size city between 60,000 and 90,000 a population. There's 18 cities in the state that fit within that area. City of Palm Coast has the third lowest millage rate. One of the things to kind of point out is all the way over on the right is the column of public service taxes. All the other cities up here, the lowest three and then the other two we sampled, all levy public service taxes. The City of Palm Coast does not. That's a fairly significant additional tax source to all of these locales. One other thing to kind of note is, for instance, the City of Weston, which has the lowest rate, the taxable value there is about $6.7 billion. We're considerably lower than that, at $3.7 billion. And if you look at their property tax collections, they're not that different in terms of total taxes collected between the city and the lowest city in this group. We took a look at Daytona Beach because they're probably the closest city to us that has a similar population. Their taxable value is not that different than ours, but their millage rate is pushing almost twice our millage rate. And then Fort Myers, which was the highest taxable value in this group, again, their highest millage rate, their taxable value was a little bit more than ours, but their millage rate considerably higher than ours. So this just kind of gives you a sense as to where Palm Coast fits in this group. So a lot of folks ask, well, what specifically do our property taxes actually pay for? About 65% of the property taxes are for the fire protection, the fire department, and the additional police services that we contract with the Sheriff's Department. The balance primarily is to street and park maintenance with a very small sliver that goes to capital projects. This slide we use is Citizens Academy, and what we've done here is we've taken all of the tax revenues that the city gets, not only property taxes, sales taxes, gas taxes, solid waste franchise fees, state revenue sharing, and grants that the city would get from the state and federal government. Including the grants, on average, the city receives $36.50 a month or $438 per year per resident. Not including grants, the city receives approximately $30 a month or $360 a year per resident in all of these revenue sources. And again, what does the $36.50 a month pay for? Code enforcement, housing programs, street maintenance and resurfacing, all of our emergency services and additional law enforcement. And based on Parks and Rec Month, all of our parks, paths, trails, not only the maintenance but construction and other indirect and related costs. So the balance of our tentative budget schedule, on July 8th, which is about a week from today, exactly a week from today, we'll be looking hard at the general fund, moving towards adopting the proposed maximum millage rate. That's the millage rate that goes out on the TRIM notices in August. We'll continue with our budget workshops on the proprietary funds, the special revenue and capital funds, culminating at the end of August with the final proposed budget to City Council. Our first budget public hearing is set for September 3rd. They'll be right at 5:05 PM. And two weeks later will be the final budget hearing, also at 5:05 PM. Any questions?
Council questions? Thank you very much, Chris. You know, it's interesting, when we finally get around to passing the final budget and the tax rate, people sometimes say, why didn't you tell me what was going on? We've been doing this since January in a very public fashion, so.
And Mr. Mayor, actually, I have pamphlets with me of the Budget at a Glance, the PAFRA, the Popular Annual Financial Report, which is the short version of our audited financial statements. They're also outside and I have them with me for anybody that wants them. Glossary.
And the glossary, and the glossary. And Mr. Mayor, all of the presentations and reports that we do related to this whole process are all out on the city website and available for citizen perusal.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number, excuse me, number five, An ordinance amending the MPD Development Agreement for Madison Green and Tuscan Reserve MPD. Mr. Reishman.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending and restating the Madison Green and Tuscan Reserve Master Plan Development or MPD Development Agreement as to Tuscan Reserve only, providing for an increase in the maximum residential units on the Tuscan Reserve condominium property from 80 to 115 and providing for revised development standards on the Tuscan Reserve condominium property, providing for conflicts for legislative findings and intent, provides for the taking of implementing administrative actions, and it repeals all conflicting ordinances. It provides for severability, non-codification, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Mayor, this is quasi-judicial. Any ex parte communications since the first reading should be disclosed.
Council notes, any ex parte communications to disclose?
No, sir.
Hearing none?
I had one citizen contact me about this project.
We can presume that your decision will be based on the facts presented here this evening.
Your presumption is entirely well-founded.
Correct. Thank you. Mr. Landin?
Mayor, City Council, this is actually the second reading. Angie, if you go ahead and just put the, maybe the location. We've had no changes since you heard this item a couple of weeks ago. It's a rezoning. It's actually, in my opinion, a very positive thing when some of those properties that went idle during the recession are starting to come back. The pad sites are there, the infrastructure's there. They're just looking to start going vertical with the condominium side of it. As you can see, it's on north side of State Road 100, just to the northwest of the Chevrolet dealership and borders Mark Town Center development. So it's a prime place right now, a hotspot for us right now for development. Angie's here, ready to answer questions, make a presentation if you'd like, but we don't have anything new. We did change the language to show the emergency access will be a hard surface or a surface that can handle the heavy equipment such as big red fire trucks. So with that, we are ready for final approval.
Quick question.
Sir?
Unsignalized intersection analysis coupled with the roadway segment analysis. What was that all about?
That was the traffic study that was submitted along with the rezoning, or rather, the zoning amendment application. The applicant submitted it as part of the overall package to us. The traffic study itself would be something that would have to be resubmitted at the time that the site plan is actually submitted to the city. So it will really be finally reviewed and concurrently determined at the time that the site plan is actually submitted for final site plan review.
Okay, because I see you had done something in 2013 also, same thing, I would imagine.
They may have submitted a traffic study at that time as well.
Your Honor, I have a question. At the first reading of this, we, some of us questioned whether or not articulated fire equipments could have easy access in egress and into this facility. How was that resolved? And what was the upshot of that question? How do we know that I can get a big red fire truck in there and get it out and do so?
That's what engineers do in design and working with the fire department and just making sure the radius is there, make sure the surface can handle it. It is, you know, it's all part of the infrastructure design, you know. And once again, I mean, fire trucks travel down the same streets the cars do, and so they have to have the right radius, you have, you know, those type of things. But a one lane in and out for emergency access works very well for them if they ever have to use that. Very confident that they've worked this out so that it's not a primary access, so that you don't have traffic going through the neighborhood, but it does provide that emergency access.
But we have somebody on our staff in Nestor's group, do we not, that is trained in fire?
Yes, yes.
Like a fire marshal?
Fire marshal. We also have, part of our inspectors are certified for fire code review. This is also an engineering thing when it comes to the street design, the variety of experts we have on staff, plus their design team, the people who designed this have those same expertise.
So I can assume then, if I hear you correctly, that the experts that we have have reviewed this and signed off on it?
Yes, you would not receive anything from us that didn't meet those kind of safety standards.
I would hope not, but the question needs to be asked.
Yes, exactly.
Are there council questions? Seeing them open to me and the public, and for the public, which will be heard on agenda item number five. If so, come up to the podium, give us your name, and your contribution to three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Michael Shmento, represent the applicant. Again, nothing's changed. We've resolved some of the language to address the mayor's concerns, and we're here to answer any questions you have. We have our engineer here to answer any technical questions, but we're available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, gentlemen. Dennis McDonald. As you remember, I spoke about this when I was here the last time, and I've done some research on this. I actually went to the city hall and asked for some copies of the plans and was allowed to have them and reviewed them and actually took them out for review. And so rather than getting into a he said, she said type of thing, what I would ask you to do when you approve this is to make sure that this project is, has a sign-off from our fire chief. Our first responders need to be considered and, you know, I want to hear as a citizen and a taxpayer in the city that our fire chief has in fact signed off on it. I don't want to hear about an engineer. I don't think any of us want to hear about an engineer signing off on this. We want to hear from our fire chief. He's a good guy. He does an exceptional job and so does his, all of his guys. And so I think we owe it to him to have a sign-off from our chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seem to approach the podium, will close the public meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion? Mr. Landin, just for the benefit of the public, what is the next step in this process?
If you approve this tonight, the next step would be for them to submit their final site plan. It's where you get into all the details with landscaping and all the.
But the site plan would be the one that pins down the road, radius, and so on and so forth?
Yeah, that's one of the details, yes. And once again, we've added that language to make sure that the emergency access is covered.
Okay. Additional council questions, comments, or a motion?
Well, I have a comment and then I'll make a motion. This is an existing development. This is just some changes to it. The road is there. You can go drive it right now and take a look at it. It was approved previously and to meet all the requirements. So move approval of agenda item number five, An ordinance amending the MPD Development Agreement for the Madison Green and Tuscan Reserve MPD. Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettis?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, ordinance with a future land use map amendment for three plus a minor acre parcel located at the southwest corner of Seminole Woods Parkway and State Road 100. Mr. Reishman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, sort of providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 comprehensive plan as previously amended. This is pursuant to section 163.31874 of statute. And this is amending the future land use map flume for approximately three-point acre parcel from Flagler County designation of industrial to the City of Palm Coast designation of mixed use. The subject property described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to the ordinance. This ordinance provides for conflicts. It provides for ratification of prior act codification, severability, and provides for an effective date.
Mr. Landin?
Mayor, City Council, this is the first reading of this conference of plan amendment or flume amendment, and there's a corresponding rezoning, which is your next item. As usual, we will do one presentation that combines the two. This is a follow-up to the recent annexation of this corner. If you recall, this is the corner of State Road 100 and Seminole Woods that was recently annexed in the city as part of our agreement to annexes and de-annex a portion that will go into the airport. So this is, gets us through the zoning stage, and then after this will be the site plan stage. Jose, please provide the details.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, Jose Papa with the Community Development Department. As Mr. Landin said, this is for a parcel that was recently annexed into the city. And just for benefit of everyone else, the parcel is located at the southwest corner of State Road 100 and Seminole Woods Parkway. Flagler County Airport's here, and the subject property as shown is hatched in blue here. Again, the site is about three acres. It was recently annexed into the city. And what we have before us today are two applications. One is to change the future land use map designation, and the other is for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning designation on the property since it is to be part of the city. Currently, the site is designated on the flume as industrial. It currently retains its Flagler County designation. What the First Amendment does is to change the industrial land use designation to a mixed-use city designation. And as we can see from just the surrounding designations in the area, that mixed-use designation is consistent with the parcels to the east, which are also designated as mixed use. It is consistent with the parcels to the west, which are in Flagler County and have a designation of commercial high intensity. To the north is a portion of the Town Center, PUD, and other mixed-use designations in the city, along with some institutional use. That's where the FPNL have a transfer station. So reviewing the future land use map amendment, again, what we do is we look at the difference in potential development between the current land use designation, which is industrial, and the city mixed-use designation, which is, the city designation, which is mixed use. And as you can see, an analysis of the maximum intensity shows that there's about a .10 floor-to-area ratio difference between a mixed-use designation and the county industrial designation. And then again, also, our mixed-use designation allows, potentially allows residential uses. And that amount of density is about 15 units, 15 dwelling units per acre. So potentially, if someone wanted to develop this site for residential, it could be up to 45 units per acre. But again, remember that there is a companion zoning map amendment to general commercial for this site. And a review of the public infrastructure, that the net difference between what is proposed and what exists, that difference, public infrastructure is available to serve that difference. We have the water and wastewater treatment facilities available. The amount of traffic being produced, as presented in the staff report, would not be significant enough to bring the level of service down on any of the adjacent roads. And reviewing the comprehensive plan, we find that the proposed future land use map amendment is consistent, as previously stated, with the existing flume of the surrounding areas. It is also consistent with the comprehensive plan in that Objective 1.1.4 is there states to promote compact and contiguous development, a mixture of land uses, and to discourage urban sprawl. This amendment meets all of those criteria and again is consistent with. This amendment meets all of those criteria, and again, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So our findings for the future land use map amendment is that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, there is no impact on the level of service or public service and infrastructure, and it is consistent with the surrounding land uses. Similarly, with the zoning map amendment, the current zoning map designation for the parcel, subject parcel, is industrial, Flagler County zoning designation. What's being proposed is a zoning map designation, city designation of general commercial, or COM 2. Again, looking at the surrounding properties, what you have to the south are, is more Flagler County industrial zoning designations. To the west is a PUD in the county. To the east are general commercial designated lands, which are in the city. And again, to the north, we have a portion of Town Center, which is designated MPD, and some high intensity commercial COM 3 to the northwest. Also, across the street on Seminole Woods, you have office uses, which is the Pinnacles Office Park. Reviewing the criteria in the Land Development Code for zoning change, we'll find that this proposed amendment is consistent with the criteria in the Land Development Code for zoning change. The proposed change is on an expanding commercial corridor with adequate capacity for public facilities and the impact of development on that property. It is not contrary to public interest or health, safety, and welfare. Again, the proposed change is appropriate on a busy commercial corridor. And we also find that this proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the permitted zoning, the proposed zoning district is consistent or permitted within the companion future land use map designation. Again, it is compatible with the surrounding uses, and public infrastructure is available to serve this development. As a result, staff along with the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommended approval for both applications. We, both staff and PLDRB recommend that City Council approve the proposed flume amendment for the three acre parcel at the southwest corner of State Road 100 and Seminole Woods Parkway from industrial to mixed use. Similarly, staff and again, Planning Land Development Regulation Board recommend that the City Council approve the proposed zoning map amendment for the same three acre parcel from industrial to general commercial. And that concludes staff presentation. Now, just, and just as a follow-up, again, this is first reading, so we will have a second reading if approved tonight at the second, at the next City Council meeting. Thank you.
Council questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public. There are two items that were in the presentation, agenda items six and seven. We will vote on them separately, but you're welcome to comment on either or both since they are integrally related. And when you wish to speak on agenda item six or seven, please approach the podium, give us your name. I want your contribution to three minutes. We see nobody approaching the podium, so we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
This is on agenda item number six.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Ness?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, which is the companion zoning map amendment, again, offer the opportunity to the public, when you wish to speak on agenda item seven separately.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to retitle.
Yes.
Oh, please do, I make that mistake twice in a row.
And this is quasi judicial, this is the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast providing for the amendment of the official zoning map, as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the zoning designation for approximately 3.0 acres of certain real property from industrial, which is the Flagler County zoning designation, to general commercial or COM 2, which is the City of Palm Coast zoning designation, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to the ordinance. This ordinance provides for conflict severability and provides for an effective date. Again, this is a quasi judicial hearing.
Are there any ex parte communications to be discussed?
No.
No.
None.
None. Mr. Landon, anything further to add?
No, last presentation covers it for us.
Okay. Council, no questions, comments, so we'll accept a motion on agenda item number seven.
Move to approve, agenda item number seven.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Ness?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight, a resolution, approval of the final plat for Country Club Harbor replat. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, you're getting a full gamut of land use type issues tonight. This one being a final plat for a single family development that was recently approved by City Council, so this is one of the final steps before they can actually start constructing homes. Constance will give you the details tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
This is Country Club Harbor replat, final plat application 2671. It is a replat of the Country Club Cove, section five and section eight. I will also mention that the applicant is here this evening if there are any questions. The location of the property was the Old Model Center site. It's south of Clubhouse Drive. It includes Sesame Island, and it is surrounded by the Palm Harbor Golf Course. The future land use of the property is residential, and the zoning of the property is single family residential, and parks and greenway for the Sesame Island, and the plat meets the requirements of that zoning district. Some attributes to the plat is it's a total acreage of 29.18. The Sesame Island is 7.35 acres of that plat, and the plat has private roadways, and the density is half of what the maximum is allowed for that zoning district. This is a representation of the northern part of the property on the plat, and tract E is designated on the plat as an emergency access. The southern part of the plat includes Sesame Island, which is tract G, that is put into a park and tree preservation tract. The applicant has also submitted to the city a request to mitigate the concurrency reservation fees. So with that mitigation, there will be a condition on the plat that the interlocal agreement for public school facility planning be, the requirements be met by either the mitigation or the payment of those reservation fees. So staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution approving final plat for Country Club Harbor replat, and authorizing Mayor to execute the plat and staff to issue a final plat development order for application 2671, subject to meeting the requirements of the interlocal agreement for public school facility planning. And that would conclude the presentation.
Council questions?
Constance, will you put the map back up, please? One more back.
One more?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the, on my map on my iPad, I couldn't open because of the size of it. So the, the lots that are, I guess that's the east of the bridge. I remember when this came to us the first time, there was some discussion if they were going to be able to develop those lots or not, and how was that resolved? I couldn't tell from this.
It was, excuse me, it was resolved by having a shared access point through one of the lots. So there will only be one access onto Clubhouse Drive.
What we're referring to are those two lots here?
Correct, that's what I'm referring to.
That have direct access to Clubhouse, and so instead of having two separate driveways, they'll have one shared driveway?
Okay.
That will serve both of those parcels.
Which I believe is consistent with the houses to the other side of that.
Across the street, you'll see the same, same kind of makeup, yes.
Right, okay.
Are there council questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public, and for the public, which should be heard on agenda item number eight.
Good evening. John R. Belding, Palm Coast. I remember when this was brought up a few months ago, and maybe I missed the answers, or maybe I missed what y'all decided to do with this, but the question was about that seven something acres called Sesame Island. That seven acres, as I understand it, unless y'all have changed and given it to the developers, that 7.5 acres belongs to the citizens of Palm Coast with absolutely zero access unless we want to go four wheeling across the golf course to get there. I would ask, and I would recommend, that unless the citizens of Palm Coast have access to that seven and a half acre fine little private park, that you would all turn it away and not give permission to do that. That seven and a half acres belongs to the citizens of Palm Coast, it doesn't belong to the developers, and it doesn't belong to the private community, the gated community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. The issue of Sesame Island.
Yes. The gentleman recalls a conversation that we had during the zoning, but the fact of it is, it is privately owned, it is not owned by the city, it's not publicly owned whatsoever. The developer offered it to the city if City Council would like to accept a dedication of that property. But the gentleman was also correct in the fact that it wasn't going to have public access, and at that time, City Council said no. If it's going to just have private access from this particular subdivision, then it needs to stay private and not be a public, a public park. So the proposal here is that seven and a third acre will stay private, it will be owned in, by the homeowners association, that will be established as part of this residential development, which was what the direction of City Council at the time of zoning, and so we're consistent with that. So this is not publicly owned property now, and it's not proposed to be publicly owned property in the future. Developers have always said that if the city wants it, they would be willing to dedicate it, but once again, it really doesn't have good public access.
And of course, with public ownership comes liability and comes maintenance responsibilities.
Right.
And to the extent that our residents would not benefit from this, I see no point in our owning it, maintaining it, or accepting liability for it.
But part of the zoning and part of this action, it will be preserved as trees, and the trees will stay there.
All right. Back to City Council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number nine, a resolution approving the nuisance abatement initial assessment. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is a, an annual approval. What it basically amounts to is, is every year we have property that the property owners do not maintain to our minimum standards, and we use tax dollars to mow the lawn, to take care of nuisances, whatever the issue is, whether in violation of our maintenance code. And then what this resolution does is allows us to actually transfer those costs to the people via their property tax, and it actually becomes a lien on the property that has the same priority as property tax, so that they, the property owners will be billed, so that when they pay their property tax, or when the property is sold, the taxpayers are reimbursed for any costs associated with maintaining their property. This is a required public hearing where you give people an opportunity to speak here, and then they will get notices. Mr. DiLorenzo at the workshop asked that we try to do a little something explaining that this was, you're getting this notice because we actually spent money on your property to maintain it. We tried to add that, but still stay within the required state law language. After they get the notice, after tonight, they will have the opportunity to appeal any of this and go through that process, and anybody who is, still is found to have, you know, basically not taking care of their property and city used tax dollars, they will have this assessment on their taxes. Hopefully, that explained it well, and the attorney may want to add to that, because it really is a legal process.
This is part of the process, it's provided for by chapter 197, it provides a really invaluable tool to your code enforcement staff to deal with nuisances. That's the whole purpose of this, is nuisance abatement. So it provides an efficient and fair method to deal with properties that are in communities that are not being maintained and are creating problems for their neighbors. And also, it's fair to the taxpayers because the costs to the community are reimbursed through people paying their taxes. So it's a, it's a nice, efficient process that's provided for by Florida law under chapter 197.
Mr. Reichman, if a lien is placed on a property for failure to pay this sort of thing, is this fall into the category, I don't remember the term, like a super lien, that if the property is closed, we get our money first?
Has the same priority, does, it's not, it's not eliminated by a tax lien. In other words, it's the same thing. People don't pay this, it's like they're not paying their ad valorem real estate taxes, and a tax certificate can be issued if this is not paid, as opposed to other types of city liens or other governmental liens that can be wiped out or eliminated when a tax certificate or a tax deed is issued for non-payment of ad valorem taxes.
Or a mechanic's lien placed...
Correct, that's correct. So this, this is a higher priority, that's what's so valuable about it.
Okay.
And just to be sure everybody's clear on this, this has nothing to do with collecting fines that the code enforcement board might levy for failing to abide by our property maintenance codes. This is reimbursement of the city for actual dollars spent where there have been determined to be nuisances that are detrimental to the local residents.
And the most, the most common is when you have a lot that's vacant, and it's just overgrown, and you've got vermin, and you've got all sorts of things that are coming out onto the streets and the next door neighbors, and this provides a quick, efficient tool to get rid of that nuisance that's in the community that's really creating a problem for, for a neighborhood.
Question. I noticed on the agenda detail of all of the specific properties and the amount of money, but I didn't have the time or the inclination to add it up. Do we have a number that, that, that money has been spent, that we will be trying, we will be billing, a total approximately, just to get an order of magnitude number?
Mr. Quinn?
The, the list before you is approximately $200,000.
$200,000.
This is the preliminary list, of course, we'll still have, I'm sure, payments, and typically, once the notices go out, some things are paid and satisfied with code enforcement, but the starting list right now is $200,000. Last year's list was somewhere in the area of $280,000.
So it's, it's gone down, and from last year?
It's gone down from last year, not the same properties as last year, but it's gone down from last year.
But this is a rolling number, is it not, Chris?
It, you know, it really depends on how much nuisance abatement the city does.
Right, but...
It's a, it's a new number every year.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yes, it's a new number every year.
And we collect what percent of that typically?
We have actually collected most of last year's levy at this point. I'd say we're pushing 85-plus percent.
It's a bigger number than most people would imagine, than I would have imagined, anyway, speaking for myself.
And the good news is, you will eventually collect 99% of this, because when a piece of property is foreclosed, whether it be for a tax lien or whatever, the first, the first things that get paid are your ad valorem property taxes, and this would get paid. Then if there's any value left over, it would go to mortgage holders and so on and so forth. Eventually, we will collect the lion's share.
I think the city staff would, would say that they would hope that this number will progressively decrease as far as these types of resolutions coming forward, because we're coming out of some times where there were a lot of foreclosures, and I think there were, you could, you could show that there's a correspondence between the foreclosures and the parcels that are identified in the exhibit to this resolution, that... and the parcels that are identified in the exhibit to this resolution, that where these actions have been taken by the city to try to help out the neighbors.
Other council questions? Open the meeting to the public, and if in the public wish to be heard on agenda item number nine. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion meeting and go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a quick comment.
Please.
The additional language in the letter is perfect, I think. It really makes a difference explaining what the, why they're receiving it.
I'll say thank you for the staff that put that together. It was a team approach.
I think it's perfect.
They specifically forced us not to add anything.
On agenda item number, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda items 10 through 16. I'd like to offer the opportunity to the public to comment on any of these items before council acts on them as a consent agenda.
I'll adj.
Number 11. Let me just see what number 11 is. Okay. That's the city lease. Anything else? Council members, is there a motion to approve agenda items 10 and 12 through 16?
So moved.
I have a question on number 12. I'm not terribly familiar with the, with that.
Would you like to remove, we'll remove 12 also. Looking for a motion on 13 through 16.
Move to approve.
Second. I think you mean 10.
I'm sorry. No. Yes, 10 and 13 through 16.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. All right. Agenda item number 11. Ms. Landon, this is the proposed resolution of the lease amendment between the city of Palm Coast and the offices at City Marketplace.
Well, I think most people at this point know that we are paying rent where we are right now on City Marketplace. Our current lease expires the end of October of this year. The new city hall is scheduled to start construction about that time and then be completed by no later than November of 2015. So what we've proposed, and what we need, is one additional year on the lease. The history of this is that the landlord proposed a significant rate increase on us, if you will. Same thing they're proposing for all the tenants in there, in this case, 57%. Went from what we're currently paying at $240,000 annually to almost $140,000 increase, or $380,000, just under that figure. We said at that, it's time to go look, see if we can find a cheaper home, which we could, but they didn't, they decided that they didn't want to lose us, so they agreed to substantial reduction in only a $22,000 increase, or a 10% increase. Yes, it is an increase, but it is still, if you consider the cost of moving twice, the downtime, you know, address changes, all those things, we believe that the smart business thing to do is stay where we are for an additional year under this one-year lease, and would recommend approval.
Counsel questions? Since this was removed from the agenda, we'll give the public an opportunity, if anyone wished to speak on agenda item number 11.
Yeah, Cal, Palm Coast. If we take it for another year, and there's an overrun on the building, do we have to go for another year? Or is there, you have some kind of a stipulation that, you know, if it takes longer than 2015, let's say it goes into 2016, January 2016, or a day after our lease is up? What happens? Do we have to renew it? Or do we just get an extension?
We'll get you an answer to that. Next speaker, run agenda item number 11. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion meeting and go back to council. Mr. Landon, in the unlikely event that construction is delayed and we can't move into the new facility as anticipated, what are the provisions?
First of all, my math wasn't very good, so I'm going to correct that. 10% of 240,000 is 24,000, not 22,000, so I, but to answer the question, yeah, it obviously depends on if that happens. I will tell you, first of all, the likelihood of that happening is not real great, because they're hoping that we would move in in the August, September timeframe. So this gives us some cushion there to, if there are delays. But if there are delays, and obviously, then you negotiate an extension. Obviously, we'd want to do month-to-month at that point. And usually landlords would agree to a month-to-month, knowing that, you know, the building's about finished. So, but we definitely would not be interested in any kind of long-term, one-year lease, six-months lease, et cetera. We'd have to cross that bridge when it came to, you know, but once again, this particular one-year lease gives us some cushion. We should be able to get in the new building before October 31st.
Okay.
In 2015. Want to make sure that's clear, not 2014.
Any council additional questions, comments, or a motion on number 11?
I have a comment, Your Honor. Mr. Landon, the construction management contract that we're contemplating entering into has a fixed price in it, you know, not to exceed.
Right.
But does it also have a performance clause that says that if they don't finish by a certain time, unless it's due to an act of God, are we due any remuneration?
Standard...
It's going to include the provision, which is in almost every construction contract, providing for a term, providing for a number of days that they have to finish, and if they do not finish, that liquidated damages that start to accrue on a per diem basis. So they are, in essence, penalized. This is common in many, many, many construction contracts. And they are crafted in a fashion so that it doesn't become a penalty, but becomes enough of a hurt so that there's a tremendous financial incentive for the contractor to complete the project in timely fashion.
So it's reasonable to assume, then, that if this condition were to exist, the penalty dollars collected would offset the need to continue a current arrangement?
Very good point, yes. One clarification, we already have the contract. It just doesn't have the final fixed price. That has come back to you, and that's scheduled, I think, is in September. But I do recall in negotiations with that contract, we did have, I don't remember the details, but I do know we have that penalty that Mr. Reichman referred to. So any, if we, small chance ever went into November of 15, that yes, there would be penalties on the contractor to pay for that. Now, of course, if it's caused by a hurricane or something...
An act of God.
An act of God, then that's, that's in there too. It's called force majeure. I think is how you pronounce it.
Yes, force majeure.
You know, it's not their fault, not our fault. Then nobody would have a penalty.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Motion on number 11?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number 12, resolution approving a school concurrence mitigation agreement with the Flagler County School Board and the owners of Country Club Harbor. Mr. Ferguson asked us to be removed for some explanation of what this is all about.
Yes. But state law, just like many of the impacts new development causes, requires new development to pay for itself. In this case, it's school concurrency or school impact fees, and Flagler County School District is no different. They have an impact fee requirement. But when this law was first put into effect, and our interlocal agreement that says the city will collect these fees when development occurs, it was during boom times. We had multiple mobile units at most of the schools, and the school district was under a lot of construction. So way our agreement with the school district reads is that because there wasn't any space in our schools, that we didn't want to artificially have space reserved, that we made developers pay upfront at the time of platting to reserve all the space. Basically, did their impact fees in advance. Well, since that time, things have changed. We have a letter in the file that says there is plenty of space in our schools to handle the few students that would come from the 54 lots. And so what this, in our agreement with the school district allows for is these mitigation agreements that basically says, instead of requiring the payment at the time of platting, that we would require the impact fees at the time a building permit is pulled. So the fee amount is the same, it's per lot, flat amount, but instead of having them pay upfront, because there is no reservation issues right now for a small plat like this, that they can pull those as individual houses come.
So the benefit to the developer is that if it takes five years to build out the thing, they don't have all that money committed for these impact fees ahead of time?
Right. And sometimes builders, developers who actually create the lots will have multiple builders.
Right.
And this makes the builder who actually builds a house and creates the home pay the fee at that time versus the person putting in the streets and the utilities. But yes, that's the concept.
The timing is the issue.
Timing is the issue, and cash flow. I mean, you know, instead of putting it all upfront and then waiting for multiple months or years before they can sell those lots or sell the homes, basically, the fees are paid at the time they have a sale of the home or close to it.
Thank you.
Mr. De Lorenzo.
Well, I would like to put the dollars to your explanation, okay? This project is 54 units that, according to the school study, that would represent just over 17 students that it could potentially produce. And the impact fee for those 17 students is $195,000. And if you're asking the developers right now, in this time where there's a few dollars and difficult to make performers work, that putting $200,000 upfront to do a quality development like this, it just doesn't work. And so they've gone to the school district and said, hey, if scattered lots pay their impact fees at building permit, and you have plenty of room for my potential 17 kids, so I would like to pay at building permit too.
If I could also piggyback on that is, we did this same thing for the last plat, which was Hidden Lakes. And then we've also, annually, the, all the cities and county and the school district are supposed to get together and talk about, you know, where we are with this. And we're going to propose that we change interlocal to allow for this, at least right now, when there's plenty of capacity. The other thing I would add is, we're having the same issue with water. Sewer, we're very, very tight, as you know, but water, we have plenty of capacity, and we require both water and sewer upfront. So you're going to see some requests to take a look at how do we make sure that we don't have fictitious lots they want to reserve for, but also make it so it's realistic. Because until the home is built, there is no impact on water, sewer, schools. So, and we get the impact fees at building permit, not when they close, so we do get it before we have the actual impact on the systems.
Thank you.
Other council questions? We'll open the meeting to the public, and if in the public wish to be heard on agenda item number 12. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion meeting and go back to council. Any additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please approach the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
John R. Belding, Palm Coast, again. I've got three things, real quick. One is, we've talked about the foreclosing on some people's property. There's property across the street from me on Riviera, and Jason may know where it's at. But the people unfortunate have apparently been foreclosed on, they've moved out, they're gone, the grass is two feet high. My problem isn't so much with that as it is with, the last time they were there, about three weeks ago, these people put waste management tubs, a blue tub and a green tub, out front for waste management to pick up. Waste management won't pick them up, and they're just sitting there. And they've been sitting there for three weeks. What do we do about getting waste management to pick up the trash that's been sitting there for three weeks? Now, I understand it's in there, you know, in a recycle tub, but that's not my fault nor my responsibility. Belongs to waste management, whether they're trash, broken, or whatever, but it is trash laying out there on the street. It's unsightly and it needs to be picked up. Another thing I've got is, you know, we've, we put awards for our water in the city of Palm Coast. My question is, is over by the library, if anybody rides by the library, drives by the library with a window open, it smells like my grandpa's old open house, outhouse. There's got to be something done. I mean, it really does. Landon laughs, but he knows what I'm talking about. It stinks, it stinks bad. Let's get an extra bag of lime and throw it in the tank. I don't know what you do with it, but that's just wrong.
I have a neighbor that has the same problem, right next door, so I can relate to it.
Yeah, and I mean, really, it's just, it shouldn't be something that's a major problem. Thanks, by the way, for the explanation on Sesame Island. I just wasn't here and wasn't aware of what had happened with that, and that was a good explanation, I appreciate it. Last but not least, on the, I'm going to touch real quick on these yard sale signs one more time. I think, you know, we need to let up on the people having yard sale signs. I would hope that the citizens show a great deal more restraint towards the political advertising that's going to be going on in the campaign season coming here than our code enforcement shows towards them and their yard sale signs. Because they're all in violation. You know that everybody's in violation. That code should be changed. People should be allowed to have yard sales. They just should be nailed after the signs have been up for too long, or whatever, you know? Find if they don't come down by Monday. I don't know how you do that. I don't really know what the answer is. But code enforcement sure is out there enforcing, tearing them down on people. I know one woman, again, foreclosed, and she was going to be out on the, out on the street. So she was having a yard sale, trying to make what she could make, and here comes code enforcement spouting at her what she can't do, you know?
15 seconds.
That's all, really, that's all. Main thing was, is the trash pickup and the smell at the library. Thanks.
Next speaker.
My name is George Mayo, from here in Palm Coast. Just on the lighter side tonight, maybe the end of the agenda, for those of you who don't know, I happen to be retired, and my main job now is watching Price is Right and then figuring out everything afterwards. One of the main prizes for the showcase this week, or, I, sorry, a week ago, was they give out trips all the time for those of you who may watch, maybe Paris, Rome, Chicago, New York City, was to fly two from LA to Daytona Beach, Florida, to pick up a rental car to drive to Palm Coast, Florida, for a five-night stay in Hammock Beach Resort. So I think if they're giving out trips on national TV to Palm Coast, Florida, I just want to thank everybody for what you've done, and I think we have arrived. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
I wanted to use tonight as kind of a starting point, as a place to move forward here between the city and the county, and what I see as major issues on fire, and the first responders. What was stated about the project that had been approved before, and so it must comply, is not the case. I sat with the county fire marshal, it doesn't comply. But it can be repaired, that's the point. And we need to be working with the county and the city fire staff, and all of these people do a great job, and I don't understand why they're not being called into the planning process early on so that you don't have... process early on, so that you don't have a bottleneck later on. That's what I'd have done in the past for 40 years, and I don't understand why it's not being done here. I found out during the process, when I went and picked up the site plans, that nobody asked the county, and I also found out that there hasn't been any inclusion on the city. I find that to be absolutely wrong. The fire people need to be included in the, in the planning process, and every one of you gentlemen who sits on this council, you need to be assured of the fact that our fire chief and our fire marshal and the people in the county have signed off on this. Case in point, this project tonight. Who's going to be the first responder to that project when it goes in? The county. The fire department's right across the street. It's obvious where these guys are going to come from, and it's a constant give and take. These guys don't have a line, this is the city and this is the county, or whatever. They all do a great job, they're here to protect us. And so what I'm asking you to do is move forward on a new policy where the fire department is included, both county and city, on any kind of new projects that you do from here on in, and I would like a commitment from you on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. See, no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. But first, Mr. Landon. It's not waste management, it's Waste Pro, but we need to get that stuff picked up.
We get it picked up. I've got to say, though, that the biggest complaint probably Waste Pro gets is when people pick up things, or the trash hauler picks up things that people didn't intend for them to pick up, you know, their favorite trash can that they, was set out there, they thought was part of the trash. But if we have-
I had just the other problem. I tried to throw out a trash can.
But they won't take it. We recently, I think it was a weed eater, the guy left it out in his swale, and went in and got something to drink, and came back, and his trash was gone, along with his weed eater.
I put my mother-in-law out there in her wheelchair, she sat there for three days, and they wouldn't get it.
So, but anytime we have this, we can, particularly if it's out in the right of way, we'll get it picked up.
And then the issue is the odor at the library. I'm not aware of that.
There is an odor.
When you come into, come up Belter to make a right turn on Palm Coast Parkway, there's some kind of a treatment facility that's, that's there, that, when the wind is right, the gentleman's right, it'll knock it down. I go by it every day, too.
Richard, is this one of our pump stations, or is this a well that has that sulfur water?
No, it is a major master's pump station on the corner. Very lousy location, but it was one of the first pump stations west of I-95. It does have an odor control unit on it. We'll have to check and make sure it's been serviced properly, but it is, it basically handles all the wastewater north of Palm Coast Parkway, and all the way up to Matanzas Woods, and all the way, part even down Pine Lakes. So it's, it's a major, major repump station, and unfortunately, sewer doesn't smell good.
I'd like to, if you don't mind, this obviously sounds like it's that pump station, I don't want us to say otherwise, but we get the complaint quite often when it's actually irrigation water that has a smell, it's going to be, maybe a different smell, but it smells like rotten eggs. Richard, explain that a little bit, because I know that neighbors complain about, you know, my irrigation, my neighbor's irrigation's on, I have that in my neighborhood, and it really-
Yeah, there's a lot of areas within various water tables that there's high sulfur content in the water, and it does smell like rotten eggs. And it is the same chemical compound, it gets released by sewer, raw sewage, when it gets stirred up. So, a lot of times, it can smell just like that, a lot of times, it is irrigation when it's not really sewer. This, right on the corner of the library, though, there is a pump station, and I do know that at times, it has issues with odor. And, like I said, we do have an odor control unit on it, but unfortunately, you can't totally control odor, odors in the sewer system.
I see city employees out there working on that on a fairly regular basis. Is that a major, major maintenance thing for you?
Oh, absolutely. It's one of, it's one of our major repump stations, so it requires constant maintenance. We hit those stations, visit those stations almost on a daily basis, the major repump stations, no less than three times a week. But there is a lot of maintenance to it, because there's a lot of flow, and, and, so that's, you know, it's just one of those things.
But a lot of flow is a lot better than no flow at all, in this case.
That's true.
Yes.
And it does, you know, there's a significant portion of that station's flow comes from up in the B section and the, and the Matanzas Woods section, which is all PEP, which is septic sewage, so there's more odors to that than there is to other domestic sewers. So odor control's an issue in a number of stations. We have, in our budget on an annual basis, additional odor control units. As these stations get higher and higher flows, they become more and more of an issue with odor, so we have a, we have a budget line item for odor control units, and-
What does an odor control unit do, Richard? How does it work?
Basically, the, the whole time, these sewers are open to the, there's a vent to the sewer system, you can't plug it all off, because then you trap gases that could become dangerous. So they release gases all the time, and the odor control unit basically filters that gas. And there's a number of different methods to control the odors, but the method that we're utilizing is basically packed towers that filter the air.
Is that gas flammable?
It, I suppose in concentrated forms, it couldn't be, yes. But that's why it's important to release it, and not let it get trapped and stay in the sewer system.
I have an adjacent question. The pump stations around town, one at Rimfire and Ravenwood comes to mind, which is one of our newer ones, or one we replaced or something. We don't keep the bushes very high, and it's kind of a tall unit, and it's conspicuous. Is it conspicuous on purpose for security reasons, or could we let the bushes grow up, so it's not so-
Conspicuous.
Conspicuous, yeah.
Well, I guess, we can talk to our landscape architect, but obviously, there are security issues, and guess what, the tall part of it is the odor control unit.
I figured.
In fact, you might look at our newest beachside sewer station, and it's got a great big tall tower, and that is the odor control unit.
And I would discourage from not being able to see into them, because it's not a good place for you want people to hide out. And the bushes are intended to soften it somewhat, but you don't want it to not be visible.
I mean, it's, that particular one is directly adjacent to a house.
That one, too, is a major repump station.
Right.
And it was, like you said, recently upgraded, it was, it's always been there. It's been there since the subdivision was built, it's always been there. But it was recently upgraded with a new wet well, and all new pumps, and diesel generator backup power, and an odor control unit, some of the latest, greatest odor control units. And I ride my bicycle by there on a regular basis, and it still smells.
Richard, sometimes, some years ago, we used to get complaints about odor on the southern part of Palm Coast, down there, I would say Cypress Knolls, and maybe some of the areas on the other side of 100. Now, I haven't heard or read anything about odors lately. Are those the same pumps we're talking about?
Yeah, there's, there's 150 pump stations out there, and some of them are major repump stations, and some of them are smaller pump stations. The pump stations in the area where we have PEP systems are a little more problematic than other areas, because the PEP system produces a sewer effluent that is septic and releases odors more, more so than a gravity system. And like I said, we have budgeted on an annual basis, more odor control units for these pump stations each year. But with 150 pump stations and about $30,000 per odor control unit, we can't afford to go out and pop odor control units in all 150 stations. So we're doing them a little bit at a time, and we hit the ones that, as they, as the flow increases, the odors increase, and that's how we prioritize which ones get odor control. Also, proximity to homes is another factor. So, yeah, there's a lot of stations that we've added odor control, there's one down on Belter, in, in the Cypress Knolls area, right on Belter, another major repump station. And the more flow they get, the more odors they release, and that one also has an odor control unit on it.
But as far as historical, a lot of the odor control units have been installed by the city in the last few years.
Correct.
And so we have been trying to address these complaints, particularly when you live next to one, you can only imagine having your neighbor's irrigation on all the time and smell that way, because it basically would be continuous. So we have invested in trying to minimize that. What I find is that the residents that are close to these, don't complain after we put the odor control unit in. That doesn't mean when you walk by it, you can't smell it, but it's from inside your home, et cetera, it controls it to the point where it's, it's not unbearable trying to sleep at night, which is the case sometimes when the, these, we saw the growth, and these units were getting quite a bit of flow without the control. So, and if you hear a complaint, you know, they do take maintenance, we do, they have to be cleaned, it's like anything else, it's got, it's got to be cleaned out, et cetera. You know, we'll take a look at it, but, and if we have one that doesn't have a control, odor control unit on it, we can take a look at whether it meets our criteria that might be one we need to add in the future.
And, Mr. Landon, I would suggest, I'm sure Richard looks at it, but are we using state-of-the-art equipment? And the reason I say that is, I spent a majority of my working life in the foundry industry, and when you smelt and melt a lot of raw metals, you get hydrogen sulfide and sulfur dioxide, and we had to have stack scrubbers all over the place because of the EPA requirements, but they did the job. No one in the community complained.
I have seen actual reports on comparing some of the different options. Richard, you may address that further, but, you know, I think we're trying to get the most efficient.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we've actually tried three or four different technologies, and trying to zero in on the one that is most effective, but also have to be cost-effective. If you throw enough money at it, you can stop all odors, but that doesn't play out too well in the, in the rate. So we have to, we have to use a reasonable system, but we, we do keep up with the latest technology and make sure we try out, see what works the best.
Another issue that was raised was the yard sale signs. I don't know if we want to revisit that. Mr. De Lorenzo, you were interested in that one, when it was first addressed. Perhaps we can take a look at that at a workshop?
I would like to.
Okay. All right. Discussion by city council of matters, not on the agenda. Mr. Ferguson, we'll start with you, sir.
I have nothing to offer you, Mayor.
Mr. De Lorenzo.
Jose and I attended the TPO meeting last week, last Wednesday, and we are ever so close to being able to vote at that meeting. I think seven of the inter-local agreements have been returned to the TPO. There is no TPO meeting for July, and they anticipate that all of them will be returned for the August meeting, and we will officially, officially, officially become a voting member of the TPO.
Here, here. Mr. Lewis.
Who?
Mr. Brier.
Yes, sir.
Discussion by city attorney of matters, not on the agenda.
Oh, boy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I have several items. First, actually, is an agenda item, it's agenda item number 17, and it's a resolution approving a settlement agreement that was discussed and negotiated and agreed to by the representatives of the city that attended a mediation with Gus and Colleen Azram, and I'm pretty sure all of you are familiar with, with those property owners. They own several parcels of property that are right near the intersection of State Road 100 and Bulldog Drive. The specific address is 92 and 108 Bulldog Drive, and, in fact, the, the improvements they're going out there are just finishing in front of their property and moving beyond their property. And they, and they've had an ongoing series of concerns that, that they have addressed to, to the city about their properties, they've, they've come to the city on several occasions, basically requesting the city or demanding the city purchase their property. This is in an area where the city, through the CRA, has already purchased several properties, and these, these parcels would complete an assemblage of CRA city-owned parcels that would be beneficial to the CRA, to the city. And even though there was no pending litigation, there was no lawsuit, the Azrams and the city agreed that it would be beneficial to try to work through what has been ongoing for many years now, a more formal process to discuss the city's purchase of their property, and deal with a lot of the issues that they've been bringing to the, to the city and the city staff for several years now. And that mediation, which is a formal process, it's not a trial, it's not an arbitration, it's a, basically a formalized settlement conference. You have a professional mediator that kind of does like a Henry Kissinger-like movement, back and forth between two different groups, and trying to find and forge a middle ground to compromise, but cannot impose a resolution on either side. It's a mediation, it's not where that individual says, I'm listening to you, I'm listening to you, this is what I find. That's not how it works, it's trying to convince both sides that maybe they aren't as right as they think they are, and that there is a middle ground that makes sense. And it's, it's a fairly productive, efficient tool for the settlement of disputes. It's used as a mandatory process in the court system. It's required under the Florida rules of store procedure. So we, the city met with the Azrams on June 20th voluntarily, no litigation, and spent the day with them, and worked out a proposal, and that is being submitted to you this evening. It is attached to the resolution, which is your agenda item number 17, and it provides that the city is indeed going to purchase this property. And the amount of the purchase price is $1,150,000. Now, there's a lot of different numbers that have, that have come back and forth from the Azrams, and counteroffers made by the city, and I'm not going to get into the long history of that. I can tell you that this is an amount that is less than a comparable figure that would have been used based upon the, the value of the property that the city did purchase at the corner of Bulldog Drive and State Road 100. So that was one factor in, in the discussions, supporting the city's offer, which is contained in your settlement agreement. Another factor, and it's not an insignificant factor, but this, this proposed settlement agreement includes a release. It includes a release of any and all claims that the Azrams may have or could bring through the, through the completion of this process of settlement. So, and they've, they've raised quite a few through the years, and they were raised, all of them were raised again at the mediation. The city believes that, we feel strongly that while these, these claims are, without, without merit, that does not mean that they will not be brought, and it does not mean that the expenses associated with defending those claims would not be incurred by the, by the city and by its taxpayers. So that is indeed one arguable benefit of putting all of this behind the city. So with that background, it is ultimately up to the city council to review this proposal, and the folks that were at that mediation are here tonight, and, other than my partner, Deborah Babnutcher, but I'm prepared, along with any, Jim, or, I think, I don't know if Bo's here or not, but he was there, Bo Falgo, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have. But that's the summary of the process, and the mediation agreement is attached to the resolution. And it provides for the standard terms for the purchase of, a private purchase between a private buyer and a private seller, so we do all the due diligence to make sure we're not getting something we don't want, you know, cause for a phase, cause for a phase one and a phase two, and we have all the necessary protections for title, make sure we're getting clear title. It does provide for a six-month lease back, or after the purchase, the Azrams will be able to retain possession through a lease for a period of six months, at which time that lease ends, period ends, no renewals, and at that point in time, the city will be able to do with its property what it wishes.
Counselor questions? Questions? Mr. Lewis.
Is, is there a cost associated with that lease?
It is $1 per month. It is $1 per month.
The idea behind that is to give the Azrams opportunity to relocate the businesses they have there and give them plenty of time to find a new home for that business.
The transaction for the actual purchase and sale could go fairly quickly because some of the steps have already taken place in the process of doing the, the city's doing its due diligence. The Azrams have been in that location for some period of time, and so they requested that they have some time after the city purchases the property, if this settlement goes through, to be able to find another property to locate to, and then to relocate.
And if they can't, what happens?
Then they will have to put everything in their garage at home. They will have to, I'm being facetious, of course, but that's their problem. This is very clear, this settlement agreement is very clear. The city buys it, they have six months to stay there, to relocate, and at the end of that, they can be ejected. That's the technical term.
And have the Azrams agreed to this?
They have.
Have they signed an agreement?
They have.
I have a question about the timing of when the city provides the funds and when the Azrams vacate. Could we go through? I've read the, trying to get the details out of here, it looks like 120 days to provide the settlement.
The Azrams will receive their funds at closing, which is no more than 120 days. They will then have six months from the closing date to relocate. They will have their, they will have all of their monies at closing.
Most real estate that I've ever been involved in, and this could be a municipal situation, but when you provide the money, then the party who gets the money relinquishes the property. So, I mean, it would take away a lot of the gray area of whether they'll comply with leaving at six months if they didn't have their money already, but if they have their money, they theoretically could play the game later on.
If they play the game, there is a legal process called a complaint for ejection. The lease would be attached to the complaint, and it would provide that it would end at a date certain, and that there are no conditions to the end of that term, the termination of the term, if you will, and the court would enter a final judgment for ejection, at which would be enforced by the sheriff.
If I may add?
Obviously, we're not, we're not planning. I mean, the, it's our understanding that since the Azrams have signed this and we've received communications from their attorneys, that they're out in the process right now looking for piece property.
So, the, want to stress, the Bulldog Drive improvement project that's going on right now will continue and will be finished, you know?
On schedule.
On schedule in August. So, this doesn't have any impact on that whatsoever. Furthermore, we don't have any immediate plans for this property, and there will be no cost associated with that, those six months, to the city. So, whether the Azrams are there or they're not there, their business there, has no financial impact on us. This isn't like you buy a home and you want to move into it, but no, you have to wait until they move out. We don't have any plans for this property.
How about the question of the source of the funds and how that may affect timing of other uses of that money potentially?
The source of the funds, in this case, because this was not anticipated, eventually it will be the CRA. The CRA does not have the adequate funds, so our proposal is that this would be, come out of ending fund reserves, you know, those unappropriated fund balance, that would be transferred into our capital improvement fund. Those, as per council policy, our general fund right now is over the 20% maximum that is set up by council policy. When we are over our reserves, then those dollars, by policy, should either go into disaster reserve fund if it is below our established minimum, which is not the case, it is actually over that minimum, or it goes into a capital fund, so it's a one-time expenditure, it doesn't go into operations. So, this will not impact other projects, this will not impact our operations, this isn't going to cause any property taxes or any other tax to go up. This is using the reserve funds that actually were over 20% at this point.
Is this offer more than we ever offered before?
Yes. It is, as Mr. Raichman pointed out, it is total cost of the corner lot, it's less than that, but it is more than what we offered.
But it's not more than what was asked?
No, it's definitely not more than what's asked. It's truly the compromise in between.
Other council questions? I guess we'll open the meeting to the public at this point.
This is an agenda item, that's a resolution, Mr. Mayor, so yes, this will be part of our process.
Open to the public, wish for her on Agenda Item Number 17. Got a little out of sequence, but.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. What I understand now is that this property is going to be in limbo for six months. In other words, you won't be able to do a thing with it until they move out or until the six months is up. Suppose we get some kind of an offer that, you know, I mean, we're not going to keep that property forever. I mean, it's not, we're buying it so that we can develop the area to, you know, to a better condition. So, if we get some kind of an offer, we have to turn it down because we can't do anything with that property for the next six months. Is that the way I understand it?
We'll get an answer to your question. Next speaker. Signal and approach the podium, we'll close the public portion, come back, Mr. Raichman. My sense is that even if somebody offered me lots and lots of money for the whole thing, it'll probably take you six months to go through the details, but what is the specific answer?
Well, like, this was requested, you know, it's, I guess, the place I would start is you have to think about what mediation is, and this was something that was part of the request, demand, whatever you want to call it, by the Azrams during the course of the discussion, this is what they needed. I can assure you that if the city had an offer that for this parcel or this parcel combined with some of the other city parcels for a really great amount of money to benefit the city, then it would have made very little interest for this mediation agreement to contain the six-month provision. But I'm unaware of any developer out there that wants the Azram property combined with any other parcel the city owns, you know, to build the Walmart or whatever. So, yes, the answer to your question.
Let's not start rumors.
Yeah. Well, I'm not, but I'm trying to kill any rumors. So, the bottom line is that six months in the timeframe of development is negligible. For the Azrams, six months is what they need, what they ask for and what they need. This is not going to be, from what I've, everything that was discussed by.
Bottom line answer to Jack's question is yes, we would not be able to sell it for six months.
But, correct.
Or you'd sell it subject to the lease.
We couldn't close, we could not close on that sale in six months. It doesn't mean we couldn't negotiate and enter into a contract.
And the sale subject to the lease.
Correct.
Which is not uncommon.
And this property is not, I mean, it has a well and septic tank, I mean, it has a lot of work. You're going to have to go through months of design for any kind of project in the future. Even if we didn't have this six-month clause, we couldn't, you would not see any kind of construction going on here greater than six months. This does not impact, the six months does not impact this property and the use of this property.
Well, plus, we would be in ownership of it, which would allow us to negotiate.
Right. We could have, that's the whole point, is, you know, you can always have the contract going.
The bottom line is this brings resolution to a longstanding series of issues that we've had. Mr. Azram wants to run his business, he wants to run his business unfettered. We want the properties along Bulldog Drive to comply with our codes. This is a resolution, and somewhere along the line, I think you said it or the attorney said it, in mediation, you wind up with something that nobody's really thrilled with the end result, and that's probably the fairest possible. So. Back to City Council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on Agenda Item Number 17?
A comment before we move on. You know, this is a lot of money, and, but it's, we have to find a way to solve this. We have a small business owner that, with a property that's in noncompliance, a use that's in noncompliance, and looking into the future, it doesn't appear that there is an easy way to bring that business into compliance. So, not an easy decision because of the amount of money, but if you think of it in the bigger picture with the other lots that we've acquired and the potential, and it's, the potential is going to be, I think, way down the road, but there is potential to do a good redevelopment in that area, gateway to town center, gateway to City Hall, next to a big high school. Difficult decision, but one that has to be made.
I have another question. In my background, I have had reason to worry about buying land with not knowing what's underneath it, and given it being a, that was in the chemical business, this is not a chemical operation, but suppose we find there's some environmental damage on that property after we buy it, who's responsible for cleaning up?
You'd have a phase one and a phase two, correct?
That's correct. We've already had those environmental evaluations, both phase one and phase two, I believe have been completed.
If, if, yes. Yeah, that doesn't mean.
That's what they look for.
Yeah. If there is any, because you have the oil and that type of thing, it's been a year or so, it's going to be relatively minor, and in my opinion, it would be our responsibility. Anything major, you could go back to previous property owners, but because we've had phase one and phase two already completed, we're very confident that we're not going to see anything major.
And if I, just so you understand, you have experts that go out to the property with, knowing, having researched the history of the uses of the property, knowing where the buildings have been, where have the repairs been made, where have the car repairs been done, or whatever, you know, it's never been a dry cleaner, it's never been a gas station or anything like that, but they would know that, so they would know where to look. First place they look is they look on the surface to see if there's any standing or contaminated soil. That's what a phase one does, and if a phase one shows that it's a positive, then they recommend a phase two, and that's when you start doing soil samples deeper down. So, this phase one and phase two have been done, and they've come out showing that this does not have a degree of contamination that would rise to the level that would cause the city not to want to purchase this property. Now, there are certain properties that you do not want to purchase. You can have an old gas station that had a leak 15 years ago, and there is a plume that's 70 feet deep and 400 yards long, and that's something that you don't want to be ever be an owner of. That's not this property.
Any further questions? Looking for a motion on Agenda Item Number 17.
Prove?
Second.
Proved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries out objection. Mr. Raichman, you said you had several items.
I have one more, and this one's going to be short, I hope, and this is an item that we discussed a little bit not too long ago about a decision that came from the Florida Supreme Court regarding the pre-2010 red light camera systems that various cities, including City Palm Coast, pre-Marc Wondell, and there's a pending lawsuit, it's Mr. Mayfield against City Palm Coast, case number 2009, 2245, and one of the very few limitations that lawyers, city lawyers have to speak with their clients, and that's the five of you, about matters that they need to be blunt with their clients, outside of the sunshine is involving litigation. It's called an executive session, and I've requested that several times before regarding other lawsuits, and I'm asking, in fact, one regarding this one, several years ago. And I'm asking again because there are several matters that I do need to discuss with you regarding settlement negotiations or strategy, it's a strategy issues related to litigation expenditures, which is allowed under Chapter 286 of the Florida statutes. And so, at this public meeting, I am requesting an executive session to be able to meet with you in an attorney-client session, and we are, with your indulgence, we will be conducting this, beginning it at an open session during next Tuesday's workshop, conducting it, and then closing it and reconvening the workshop, just like we always do. This will be noticed, and it'll be transcribed, just like these sessions always are, and when the litigation is completed, that transcript should be typed up and it will be made part of the public record. But this will allow your lawyers to speak with you about the status of this lawsuit and where we believe it's going to go from here, the defenses that are available, but primarily or exclusively regarding settlement negotiations and discussing strategy regarding litigation expenses, which is contemplated by the statute. So, with your indulgence, we will be noticing that in the newspaper and, excuse me.
At city offices.
City offices, I beg your pardon, and we will be having this next Tuesday. And that's it.
Mr. Landon, I assume you're having a relatively short workshop agenda?
Okay.
Or?
Or, yes, I can't.
Mr. Raichman, anything further?
That's it.
Discussion by City Manager of matters, not on the agenda.
Yeah, first of all, staying with serious nature of follow-up with the attorney is, we do have our first tropical storm out on, off the shore of Florida, Tropical Storm Arthur, and it's just a good reminder that it is that time of the year. We've been fortunate, obviously, so far this year, and this storm appears that it's going to stay out in sea, it's about 100 miles out right now, and go on up north and once again bypasses, but we are monitoring it, city, county, everybody, we're holding briefings twice, two, three times a day with state officials also to make sure everybody's prepared. So, but just a good reminder, everybody does need to be prepared. We have a lot of information on our website, and the county emergency management has a lot of information as to how to get prepared. On a more fun note, you know, it's last, I think it was last meeting, last couple of meetings, I announced that we were having a new type of tournament, the National Collegiate Championship for Women's Rugby, and I announced, I'd never heard of that before. Well, I have a new one I've never heard of before because I'm not a Harry Potter fan, but the United States Quidditch Association announced today that they are coming to Palm Coast with a Southern Regional Tournament in 2015. So, Quidditch is a, seems to be one of those up-and-coming sports, field sports kind of tournament that's very popular at the college level. So, we will have college students, or any age, I guess, but I've been told most of them are going to be college students from all of the Southern United States coming in and playing Quidditch here. This is one of those where we had to compete, it was in coordination with TDC, Tourist Development Council, they actually took the lead, but once again, it's a matter of, you see the poster on the back, we put that out on our fields to say welcome. Out of 35 communities that competed, we won, and this will bring in hundreds, thousands, excuse me, thousands of visitors, and all part of our prosperity 2021. I think sometimes we forget about how this is really part of our economic development strategy that brings those outside dollars and helps our small local businesses, and is part of our economic engine here and been very successful, so. Mayor, with that, Quidditch story, if you, if anybody wants to look at, I know, I can't make these things up, but I think it's pretty exciting. We're all smiles right now. It's took a team effort to make it happen, and it's a good thing. So, with that, that's all I have tonight.
Are we going to get City Council brooms?
Yeah. Yeah, I bet we could arrange something for it when they come into town, we could.
City Council gets PVC pipes.
That's about the extent of my Quidditch knowledge as well, though. You need a broom.
Yes.
And all those little wing balls that flies around.
Yes, and don't forget, 4th of July coming up, we have on the third, the evening of the third is our fireworks at Central Park, and then the morning, Saturday morning, the, no, Friday morning, the fourth is when we have our little brief ceremony out at Heroes Park, and then, of course, that whole weekend, and particularly Friday night.
Friday evening, you have the fireworks at.
At Flagler Beach, and all the happening out there, their big party up in Flagler Beach, so hopefully, and we've been told, you never can tell about these, that Arthur will be far enough up the coast that it will not put a damper on our 4th of July festivities. Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I move we adjourn.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.